The mics are hot right now. It says five. All right, please stand for the pledge, face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
All right. I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to open the special meeting and work session of the village boards scheduled for Monday, March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four. May I have a second?
Second.
On favor? Aye. All right, so at the top of the meeting, um, we are going to have a presentation from Mr. Mr. Friedman, um, regarding New York class. New York class was something that he had come and discussed with the front office here. Um, we are very much in support of it, but I just felt like it might be a good idea to give the village board a little bit of a better, more more granular level understanding of. So the floor is yours.
So, um, you all see me? Do you want to stand up?
Yep, go ahead.
It's a, um, it's a cooperative investment program. So all the towns, villages, the school districts, counties, cities, towns, so municipalities and fire districts can actually pull their money together uh, in New York class. It started in nineteen eighty-nine, so it's been around for a long time. Assets have gone up quite a bit. It's up to twelve billion dollars in assets now around the state of New York. So we have some counties um, who have, you know, over a hundred million dollars in the program, and we have some small fire districts or departments, uh, some small villages that might only have thirty or forty or fifty thousand dollars. We don't care. It doesn't matter the amount you put in. There are no minimums whatsoever.
You're good.
So, so basically how it works, um, my background, I worked for Standard and Poor's in New York City for twenty-five years. I used to rate New York class. I used to rate pools, programs just like this. Um, and it's, the goals are safety, liquidity, yield. We know municipalities.
Safety, liquidity and yield.
So safety is number one. So you can't lose any money. You, you know, the, the key for you is you don't want to be in a position where you can lose money, right? So everything in the program is collateralized or it's treasury bills. That's it. So we can only buy the same thing that the village can buy, which is treasuries or basically bank deposits. All of our banks that we use are also collateralized, just like you would have to do over that two hundred fifty thousand dollar loan. Um, so that's part of the safety aspects. Everything's collateralized. You will get a collateral report every month. Um, just like your bank would provide. You keep your banks, so whatever banks you're using, you keep them. You just move the money right online between your bank and New York class. Think of it like a savings account, online savings account, and then hopefully you'll earn some additional yield. And then you move it back whenever you need it. It's daily liquidity one hundred percent. So that means if you need, you put a million dollars in, you want that million dollars back next week or in a few days, you get to move it back. You keep your interest. So it compounds and pays every day. So you keep all the interest. And it's never lost even a penny for participants since nineteen eighty-nine. Uh, the yield will vary. So whatever the short-term rates are at the time, the Fed will move, right? You saw the Fed moving up right now. The Federal Reserve range of those short-term rates are like five and a quarter or so. Um, our yield on this program is five point two three percent right now. Um, the rates in New York class over the last, let's say, three or four months have been about low five twenties up to about five thirty. So it's in that small range. Um, we negotiate with the banks that we use, so we get very attractive rates of um, right now over five and a quarter from those banks. So.
Nothing in this, nothing in the stock market. Everything you do is tied to CDs and money markets and those kind of types of things.
Tied to short-term, it's only treasuries and collateralized bank deposits and overnight um, bank-type product. That's right.
So it's not, but it's not FDIC insured.
So some of it's FDIC.
Up to.
Treasuries or collateralized. So, so that's your protection, is that collateral. It's like an insurance protection. We've never used a collateral since nineteen eighty-nine. It's there for your protection. It's never had it been used, including during the two thousand eight financial crisis. I used to rate this. Standard and Poor's still rates at triple AM. Um, and what that means is they get their portfolio every week. They look at the portfolio. It's within the Comptroller's guidelines as well.
What's your yield on like twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three?
Very low during, uh.
Five is great now because we're riding the waves, but.
Correct. So the yield is gonna vary with whatever the Fed does, whatever the short-term.
So you're probably in the two points back in twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty when the Fed lowered rates to zero?
Yeah.
So we are at like ten basis points or something, whereas a bank is paying maybe five basis points, you know, point oh five.
Yes, right. So it's, it's better than just putting the money in the bank and saying, pay us whatever interest rate we give us.
Likely over time will get more. And so if you look at what your banks are paying now, which I don't know the answers that I did come in, I met, we were definitely one or two percent higher at the time. We don't know right now.
Yeah.
But, so for example, some of the local, um, oh, so there's a board that oversees as well. And there's two local board members, um, in Orange County anyway, and.
Who are they?
So Bob Willing is at the Howells Fire District.
Yeah, I see him. Okay.
Okay, and, um, and Portervis City School District, W. R. So those are two, uh, within kind of this area. There's some in West.
So, so the benefit to us, uh, uh, we don't want to just put it into a bank account and not get the maximum return we cannot we can on it without the risk, but we're not tying it up in a money market or a CD which requires seven months, twelve months, fourteen months. As you said, it is completely liquid. So if we need, something big happened here, we need to pull money out, there's no penalty for that.
No penalty. We'll, we'll never charge you a transaction fee. You're not gonna get a bill from us. So.
How do you guys make money?
So it's a basis point, so.
Well, they've got to loan the money out somehow, right?
We don't loan, no. It's, it's a very simple thing. So it's very much like a money market mutual fund. So if you've seen like fidelity investments or Vanguard, they have these money market funds. Though, just like us, we charge up to, it's about an average of about thirteen basis points, point one three. So if we're paying five twenty-three today, which is what we are, that means everybody, every fire district, every town, every village gets five twenty-three. Doesn't matter your size. When you add the point one three percent on top of that, I have to do the math, five thirty, what? Five thirty-six is what the fund is yielding right now. Five thirty-six, it's yielding.
So we're not ready to check, but you are taking.
Correct. So that's what we're taking.
That's the, so the number you're giving us is the net.
Correct. So I'm giving you the net, and that's what you're actually getting, the five twenty-three. Um, so it's a very small thing.
You're speaking Mandarin to me right now. It's like, thank God you guys understand this, but, so you're not, so wh- when you say, so you're not loaning that money out? How is that money accruing?
We're, we're just buying treasuries.
Buying treasuries, and that's what it's rooted in.
Short-term?
And debt.
Is it, is it, so you had written and, and gave a, an ex, thank you, by the way, and I'm sorry for being late, everybody.
Yeah.
Uh, you had provided a lot of these points, uh, in writing to us a while back when I had raised some of the questions, and you said, you know, no, no investor in this program lost money during the two thousand eight, nine crash, which is great. Uh, so I take it that CDOs weren't a big component or the things that caused the.
So, you're talking about collateralized debt obligations?
Yeah.
No, none of that kind of stuff can buy. There's no structure, no. These are very vanilla-type securities, right? So I used to rate that and I used to. Wasn't good.
And I was surprised to see you were coming tonight, cause actually I was, I was the one who had raised all the questions, and I was fine with your explanation. I'm sorry, I don't think I.
More just for the rest of us that we could understand it, so. So, so here, let me cut to the chase in this. So from our perspective, so we're sitting on about two point four, two point five million dollars worth of unallocated fund balance. So that's the money that we would be seeking to, we're not gonna put ours, we bring revenues in, right? And then write checks out for our expenditures.
Right.
We're, we're not, we're not investing that money with you. What we're doing is the money that we're sitting on, that's drawing a lower interest rate in the bank.
But we're not doing the whole amount.
No, no, we would look to do a number.
You can do whatever amount you want. Again, we don't have any minimums.
You don't have any minimums.
No minimums. We have unlimited sub-accounts too, which means that you can set it up so every one of those, the accounting is done for you. So if you have a water, sewer, aqua fund, whatever, each one of those gets a report at the end of the month. Um, again, there's no transaction.
Can you give us some examples of local communities and?
I can. I actually have a list, which I have a few I'll give you.
Off the top of your head, like, like, what kind of amounts are people investing? Let's, it's something similar to us.
So, well, the town of Cornwall uses it, by the way. Um, and so does the school district.
All right, what is, what is the town of Cornwall have invested?
Oh, I can't say that.
You can't say?
No, that's, I mean, I, it is public if you went online.
Right, gotcha. All right.
Here, uh, this will help you. So we have two hundred and two villages. We use our program around the state.
Around.
They have an average of three million dollars.
An average, each village has an average of three million dollars?
Some will have twenty million and other villages have small amounts, about one or two million, right? So when you start using it, then, then you see that people start using it more because you notice that you're earning a lot more for it. So you can use other types of reserve accounts, other things like that.
Got it.
Cause you can move it same day with the wire. You get your money by, if you do it before noon, our fund closes at noon, you'll get your money same day in your account. ACH, which is Automated Clearing House, is next day.
Got it.
Can I?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Can I ask you to do something odd, which is to completely switch your perspective and come in and tell us why we wouldn't want to do it?
So, that's a great question, and the reason I took this job is because there's not a lot of reasons why you wouldn't.
Ah, well played.
Be part of the banking group, okay, at S and T. And the banks, I know how they earn their money, right? So, and there's nothing wrong with that. They're for profit, but they're going to make some additional money by, you know, giving you, let's say they're giving you three percent, when right now short-term rate's over five percent. That's over two hundred basis points, over two percent, that they're keeping for their ongoing operations. Our operations are very low, low budget overall. Um, you know, one of the reasons we find that some don't do it is they just don't want to take that next step, bringing it to the board because it takes time to do that, reading the documents, it takes time to do that. And then, you know, once you, you have to get set up online, which is an online portal, that doesn't take long, but some villages, especially smaller ones, just don't feel like it's worth it to them, even though they can earn a lot more money. So, that's really what it comes down to. Here's a list, which I'll give you.
I got a question for you too. Who, who oversees does the comptroller's office overseas? So is there like, um, uh, school districts, some towns, towns and villages are, have a maximum amount of fund balance they're allowed to carry by state regs?
So state regs do not have a maximum for this.
Okay.
Um, because everything, it's, it's a.
Even for school districts?
Even for school districts. Now, a school district, per, each school district has their own rules. One school district actually has over a hundred million dollars in New York class. Others will have a rule that you can't do more than twenty-five percent per bank or, but you know, financial institution. So that's up to them, though. The comptroller's office does not have that guideline.
Cause SED regulates the amount of fund balance you're allowed to have. SED, State Education Department.
Okay, I got a question for you. If I needed to see a face, talk to somebody, where would that be? Where the closest place, or how quickly could somebody come here if we had questions?
Okay.
So you're based out of where?
Well, I'm based out of, uh, East Fishville, Hopewood Junction.
Okay, other side of the river. Okay, gotcha. So if we needed to see you, your, your phone call and a thirty-minute drive away.
Correct.
Okay, all right. All right, um, any other questions from trustees? I mean, I, I don't think we had any problems with it. I think the board, Bill was asked, Bill's in the financial business, so he had more pointed questions than the rest of us, but for the rest of us, it was just getting that warm and fuzzy and kind of seeing you in person. Um, I'm gonna discuss this with the board. Um, you don't have to stick around for that. Um, and then I think what we'll do is, uh, Doris and I will reach out to you.
Right.
Is that okay?
Yes, and I'm gonna leave this packet with you.
Great.
And, and here is a registration packet, if you decide to do it. And you just, it takes about fifteen minutes to fill out. Do you have to pass a resolution? There's a resolution in there.
That's easy.
We already did.
Yeah, I think we did. Yep, I think we're, we're, we're beyond that. And so if we wanted to, let's just say for, you know, S's and giggles, as they say, find out what the town of Cornwall had invested in that. That's publicly available information, is it not?
It, it is. You can go online, you can see that.
Okay, good.
Or you can just ask them, I'm sure they'll.
Exactly. So, yeah, exactly. How long, how long has the town of Cornwall been?
Cornwall, not that long, probably a year or so.
How about the school district?
Long, um, five years maybe.
Interesting. So you deal with Mr. Sotland, Harvey Sotland?
Yes.
Excellent. So I'll give them a shot. All right, awesome. Appreciate you coming in, Mr. Friedman. Thank you so much. That was beyond helpful.
All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you, sir. You're gonna go out that, the front right there? Yep, there is, right, right around the corner, right here. Go ahead. We're not gonna say anything bad about you while you're here. Um, so, yeah, we did, Bill, thank you for reminding me that. We did pass a resolution for me to execute that. Does anybody? I should wait till he's, but anybody have any issues or problems with it? Here's what I'm thinking. Um, as we sit on just under two point six million dollars in unallocated fund balance, what about a million dollars to start and see how it goes? They've been in business since nineteen eighty-nine, have not lost money. Anything that they're doing is better than us just keeping it in the bank. I feel like we're not doing our due diligence. If we don't at least do something that yields better than that without taking on huge risk. What are your thoughts?
It's marginally riskier than FDIC insured deposits in a bank.
What did he mean by part of it is FDIC insured?
Well, I wasn't sure if the treasury component was FDIC insured or not, uh, the bonds, but those are, those are pretty safe, because that's government bonds that, you know.
Most of it, most of it is FDIC.
FDIC insured bank deposit account.
But when he says most of it, is it a percentage? Right, but is it a percentage and it just, like, what does that mean?
Sixty-two point two six percent.
So of what we put in, of what every entity, every municipality that puts money in, it's sixty-two percent?
That's, that's, that's treasuries.
Yeah.
Uh, and then the collateralized debt bank, collateralized bank deposits, fourteen point oh eight percent.
Got it.
So that, to me, suggests that the, the larger component of it is, you know, as risk-free as a US treasury bond.
Right.
And the other piece is where it's maybe, possibly, but according to the track record that we've heard and the fact that they're not investing in the kind of risky things that were some of the basis for the crash in two thousand eight, nine, suggests to me that it sounds safe.
I was thinking one-third of what we had, so I was thinking ballpark of.
One-third, one-third? Where'd you come up with one-third?
Just because it's like, to me, it's just, put it, it's just a risk.
All right.
And if, you know, we see it goes well over a couple of years, then you can add more, but I.
I guess you'll see it.
Third, two-thirds.
Right, Bill, I mean.
I don't disagree. I don't disagree. So that would be under a million dollars. We're probably talking seven hundred thousand, seven fifty?
We have two point six.
Yeah. So, okay. All right, I will, I will discuss with Doris tomorrow. Is the board comfortable seven fifty to start?
I am.
Of course. Okay, Dave? All right, then that's what we'll do. And we'll file it for a year?
Two point four, we have.
Yeah, I was gonna say, because we did use some of the fund balance this year to keep ourselves underneath the tax cap, so. Okay, all right, I think that was helpful.
By the way, these are all the close ones, so it's a lot.
Yep.
The nearby.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, all right, um, next matter of business. Um, Jim, do I need to open the special meeting or did I open it already?
They already did.
We opened the special meeting. Do we just keep the special meeting open for all the board business afterwards?
No, we can close it out.
All right, right after the, the appointments?
Yes.
And the purchase of the asphalt trailer. Okay, so the first item of business, and gentleman and gentle lady, um, I've been speaking to you folks one-on-one and, um, in executive session regarding personnel matters about movements and what we're gonna do and, and what we're looking at going forward. The village right now feels like it is not in a position to hire an outside treasurer. We have looked at, when I say reams and tranches of, um, resumes and CDs that have been sent here. Um, I know it's in the middle of tax season, which is a bad time to be seeking a treasurer. And I know the village's track record in trying to seek outside help from a treasurer over the course of the last fifteen years has been, uh, has, has, has been, um, has been a tough thing. Um, Gene Mahoney did it for almost a decade, um, for us, uh, with a stipend. Obviously with Gene gone now, Hall is filling some of that role, and Megan Gishwin, who is our deputy village clerk and has done a great job with that, um, and is looking for more, uh, responsibilities. Um, the village board has discussed this at length in our meetings, and the thought is, is that we separate the duties. We move them, we cross-pollinate a little bit, so the duties, the deputy village treasurer has always been a part-time, I'm sorry, full-time position. And the treasurer, even though we have it, it could be a full-time position, we've only had a part-time um, treasurer here, which makes it kind of difficult and awkward, because you're bringing somebody in that hasn't been here for a long time to oversee a deputy village treasurer who's been here a long time and has obviously the knowledge, skills and experiences um, that a treasurer would need to have, but to do that, you gotta pay somebody to do that. Um, so what the village board is seeking to do is to assign some duties to the deputy village treasurer, Paula Howard, and then to increase some of the, the duties of the deputy village clerk, Megan Gishwin, and to do this on a trial basis for one year, um, to see if this works. If this works, I'm confident that I believe it can work, having met with them and with the village clerk, to make sure the delineation of duties, there's no blind spots, there's no things that fall through the cracks, everybody has responsibilities, knows what they are, and they're all assumed. So, um, to do this, we're going to take the approximately nine thousand dollars that was the stipend for the village treasurer. So Gene got that on top of what she got as the village clerk, um, to be the village treasurer. We're gonna take that stipend and split it between the two, and the duties are, are commensurate with, with that split, as I see them, having ground through them with Paula, Megan and Doris last week. So I'm gonna make a motion to increase the salary of deputy village treasurer Paula Howard by four thousand five hundred dollars or half, approximately half of the stipend that Gene was making. The increase is effective retroactive to March first of two thousand and twenty-one, so ten days ago.
Four. Twenty-four.
I'm sorry, two thousand and twenty-four, through the period ending April seventh of two thousand and twenty-five. I believe April seventh is the reorganization meeting in two thousand and twenty-five. The increase is merited upon the additional administrative duties that the deputy treasurer will be performing during the intermittent absence of a village treasurer. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion or questions, issues?
Good plan.
Yep, it will save the village, as I did the math, um, almost twenty thousand dollars for this year. If it works, we will continue it and then we'll make some formal appointments, and if it doesn't work, we can always readjust back to the way it was and repost for the treasurer position.
And the, the, uh, it's a, there's no, we're not appointing a treasurer, correct? We've, we've resolved that question.
We're adding additional responsibilities, Bill, during the intermittent absence of a village treasurer. All right, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, um, Jim, will you make sure you make note of that, so we can give that to, uh, to, to Doris? All right, I'm also gonna make a motion to increase the salary of deputy village clerk Megan Gishwin by an additional four thousand five hundred dollars per annum. The increase is effective retroactive to March first, two thousand and twenty-four, through the period ending April seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. The increase is merited based upon the additional administrative duties that the deputy clerk, the deputy village clerk will be performing during the intermittent absence of a village treasurer. Uh, may I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
What's, what's the, uh, how, what's the term? What's the?
So, so we're gonna make it retroactive to March first of two thousand and twenty-four, and the period will end April seventh of two thousand and twenty-five. Yep. All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that takes care of that. Moving on to the second and last resolution, the purchase of a hot box asphalt trailer. David, before I do the resolution, anything to add on this or to give the board a status update on the equipment?
Uh, thi- this is just for, uh, it'd actually be used year-round. We use it for coal patching as well as hot mix. It has a diesel burner in it. It's air-jacketed to the whole four ton of asphalt. Uh, it'll keep blacktop warm all day.
All night?
You can, you can actually reheat and.
Did, is it plugged in or not?
This one doesn't have a plug-in. That's an option that we can add after the fact if we decide to do that.
I know a lot of people have to plug.
Uh, didn't go for that in this model, but.
That's fine.
It's available, it's just, uh, I think it's.
Do you know what the reheat time is, is on coal blacktop?
Uh, reheat time, no, I didn't look at, I didn't look at that.
Just wonder, just curious.
What do you heat it with, with fuel?
Uh, it runs on diesel fuel. It's got a diesel burner in it. It holds, and like I said, it holds four ton of asphalt. Uh, one of the problems early in the season, late in the season, is, uh, traveling with blacktop in the dump truck for forty minutes.
It's cold.
Between sites.
Understood.
Does, Dave, does the town have one?
No, they do not.
Would the town be bor- borrowing from us for use, probably? Yeah.
I, I wouldn't be surprised, but, uh.
We share equipment.
The town, the town in the Windsor purchased one last year, which was their first one that they've had, and they had great.
Same size, same model?
Uh, they have, they have a, uh, oil jacketed. Ours is gonna be air-jacketed.
What's the difference?
Uh, there's, the, the insulation in the unit is oil between the two metal components. Where ours is actually air, where it's blowing the hot air in, uh, theirs is heating the oil.
Good. Good.
Just look, different, different setup. That was a little, that one's more expensive. This one's a little less expensive.
See, one of the problems is the plants generally close on the week of Christmas. So sometimes you have to travel to fill that box up if you're using it a lot. That's, that, that is.
How do you know so much about asphalt?
I did it for.
Patch some leaks.
Every day. And we use coal patch, which is garbage, which is what they're using now a lot. So it's like, is this kind of a contraption?
Uh, I actually brought.
Give a model of it?
I brought a photo. This is actually the unit that.
See, that's blacktop. Now, that's.
This is what it looks like?
That's, that's the unit that, that's, that's your unit I, they have in stock.
That'll be a rental.
It's like a tonka truck.
Free.
Yeah.
Who remembers what tonka trucks are? Only the old people. Yeah.
Nah, it's. You got it. It's that versus bags of coal patch?
Yeah.
Or buying coal patch.
No, I think economically speaking and obviously making it our, our work here more efficient, this is the way to do it.
The nice thing about this, our coal packs, we store it outside.
Yep.
So when in the middle of winter.
Yep, throw the bags in.
When it's five degrees outside, that's the temperature to mix. We load it on the truck, we park it inside overnight. Try to let the ambient air warm it up, and then when you go outside.
Yep, but it will stay outside? I mean, there's no way to keep that inside all the time, right?
But we put it in this. It takes twenty minutes. It's heated up and you're out the door. You load it the night before. You fire the burner up in the morning and it's warming, ready to go.
Not to take us down a rabbit hole, but I'm going to, did you see the email from Senator Scoofus's chief of staff in regards to Route two eighteen and paving?
When did it come through?
This evening. Six thirteen this evening.
No, I did not.
Okay, so Emma Fuentes, who's the chief of staff there, um, I reached out to them and asked them to make a push. They did. And I want you to stand down. I told Dave today that he has to go out on two eighteen, which is a state road and patch because even my Jeep, um, almost bottomed out on a couple of spots where they're.
Supposed to do nine W today.
It's, it's, it's awful. So they reached out and apparently got a response back from DOT saying that they are gonna be in Cornwall this stretch of two eighteen this week to do an assessment, um, and maybe do some patching. They haven't given us the date on repaving, but if we could just get those patches. So stand your guys down, because let's give them this week. If it's not done by Monday of next week, then I'm gonna send you back out there because it's just.
That one down there.
Uh, it's awful. It's awful. It's dangerous. David and I talked about it this morning.
Ride nine W.
Yeah, nine W's awful too. You go by the hospital on nine W, it is awful. It is brutal.
Car lost control this morning and went across the meridian.
Yeah.
After hitting those bumps right, right by Phil's.
Well, better than we get a push from the senator's office, we'll, we'll get a response and, so don't do anything this week. I know you had plans. I told him and Dave agreed, we were gonna do that just as a.
We'll be coal patching our own stuff.
Yeah, let's do, let's do that, but let's stand down on two eighteen. Let's see if the state comes in and does what they're supposed to do.
We don't have a ton of our own to do. We have a few, but.
Okay. And maybe the big one, Dave, if you think that we need to do it just for a safety thing, because my Jeep hit it this morning and I thought I was gonna.
I hit it, so.
Yeah. All right, um, so let's move back to the purchase of the hot box asphalt trailer. So here's the resolution. I'm gonna make a motion authorizing the village to purchase a new STEP, S-T-E-P-P-MFG Model SPH three point oh hot asphalt trailer from Greenway Sales at the cost of fifty-three thousand two hundred and ten dollars. The purchase is over the twenty thousand dollar limit required by the New York State General Municipal Law, but is not subject to bid because it will be purchased through a New York State authorized provider. May I have a second?
Second.
Yes.
Sorry, I have, uh, fifty-three, two, three, or three twenty-one.
I'm sorry, fifty-three.
Three twenty-one, zero, zero.
That's what I said. I said fifty-three thousand three hundred and twenty-one dollars. Did I? I feel like.
Somebody will call in.
I know. All right, so let me amend that to say at a cost of fifty-three thousand three hundred and twenty-one dollars and zero cents. May I have a second? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that is it. So Jim, you're suggesting we don't need to close the special meeting to go into work session, or should we?
We're not, are we taking any further action?
No.
Any resolutions?
That's it.
Why don't we, I'll make a motion to close the special meeting?
Yes.
May I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. I just, no, I was just trying to clarify.
No, no, we just closed the special meeting, so.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
So I don't need to make a motion to open up the work session.
Yeah, so we're getting the best price.
Yeah, I think the mayor did say.
Okay, alright, so moving on to um since we're out of the special meeting and moved into the work session. Now, the, and this is the work that Paula and Megan are doing now. Um which was done by Jean Mahoney for so many years, but is doing the reconciliation reports for our meeting, so. Um I don't have all the numbers yet because obviously I won't have them till the business meeting, but I have some of them, so. February monthly water report for the village, two hundred sixty three thousand four hundred and one dollars and thirty one cents, for the town, two hundred sixty nine thousand seven hundred. Four dollars and forty five cents, so the total February monthly water report, five hundred and thirty three thousand one hundred and five dollars and seventy six cents. Warrant number three is obviously still not tallied and reconciled. Monthly revenue and expenditure reports by fund, the general fund revenue, four million nine hundred and sixty thousand. Actually, I'm not gonna read it, I'll do that at the business meeting, just go ahead and take a look at that, anybody having issues with it, and if you don't. Then I'm just gonna move on to the next thing, okay?
Uh our fiscal year ends the end of this month, right?
Fiscal year ends at the end of March, yes, March thirty first.
Just a general question, you you might know this.
End of February, this year was twenty nine and right, you're right.
When does dispersment take place on um Capitol Sewer?
Only.
They bill us?
Yes.
If I remember correctly, we've made one payment so far.
Okay. Just wondering.
Alright, know that um on the sewer stuff, because obviously we've been having a number of meetings on that stuff, we will be having one with the town, probably. Probably is not gonna happen in April, but I would say by May, we'll be having our first exploratory meeting with the town, uptown with them on that, so. Alright, so moving on to the building department, um Senor Carmona. Um so I had a long conversation with our counsel today and directed him to immediately reach out to you. To deal with the summonses, the court hearings, the consultants invoices and all those things, did those things happen?
No, sir.
You did not hear from him today? Okay, I'll reach back out to him, I know he understands that that is on the top of my priority list, and what am I talking about? Um legal counsel and help on properties that are in violation. In repeated violation and that we now have to take to court, so it obviously involves um legal counsel on that.
Manny, do you know?
Um.
Several.
Yeah.
Okay, this also includes those property on a multifamily dwelling that have not complied with the fire safety inspection.
Ooh.
Looking a couple of dozen.
Yeah.
Really?
Yes, sir.
Everything from not mowing your lawn to broken fences to just a whole host of different things. Um Manny, the that New York State form, and I'm I'm drawing a blank right now, the name of that form. Twelve oh three, which is what, what's the title of that form?
The uh Court Enforcement Administration Report.
Got it, when you sent that to me, were were all the trustees?
I did not say I left that.
Okay, I'm gonna take a look at that again first thing tomorrow morning, so that they take a look at it, we need to file that with the state.
That's an annual requirement for the order form, right?
What's the drop dead time that we have to get that in? April first, alright, so you're gonna beat me up tomorrow and make sure that I get that to you.
I got a baseball bat.
Alright, love it, okay, um Manny, anything um off the top here that the board needs to. Be advised about in regards to your February report?
No, sir.
Okay, um board members, anything on here that you wish to question the building inspector about? Nothing looks out of order here. So no stop work orders, that's always a good thing, but then again, this isn't really the construction season. Nobody put in to have solar panels put on their house, um other than that, it looks like the usual. Usual stuff, any questions for the building inspector? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to the fire department, alright, I keep getting this wrong, is it the fire commissioner, the fire chief? Who is, is it the captain, is it the assistant fire chief, who is giving this report?
I'm here.
Alright, alright.
At the meeting at the end of the month, we hope to try to define the duties and responsibilities of the board fire commissioners.
Yes, alright, good, okay, so for this report, Rick, anything on here that um you wanna call the attention to the board for?
Uh number four, uh through the work of many members in the fire department, we've submitted a FEMA grant to try to save the village. Three hundred and sixty thousand dollars to replace our aging uh.
S C B As.
Is that wholesale or is that um all of them, half of them, rotation?
State fed, it's all of them.
Oh.
How many?
How many?
Captain? Thirty five.
Wow.
That's thirty five air pack like the the uh frames and then seventy bottles.
Seventy bottles.
So every, every air packing is ever.
Yeah. Those files, but everything's still okay, right? I mean, they have to pass.
Well, it it's no longer in compliance with NFPA.
Really?
This will bring them in, interested, they were NFPA compliant when we purchased them twenty years ago, but standards have changed.
Oh, I see. Is that how old they are, twenty years old?
Yes.
Wow, is there value in them to some other type of agency?
Only those who don't wanna be compliant.
Bottles can't be done or not.
There's no.
Bottles are done when they're done.
Lower standards for scout reels or something like that.
Yeah, the the bottles get hydrotested every five years, um but only, they only get two tests.
Okay.
Fifteen years are done.
Okay, I did not know that.
Regarding.
Man, I'm learning a lot.
Regarding number two and the candidates who have applied for membership, what's their age range? Do we know the age ranges of the two applicants?
I didn't bring the applications tonight.
Okay.
How old are you?
Thirty three.
So one thirty three.
Oh, thirty three and thirty five.
Thirty three and thirty five, okay.
Uh never mind then, uh Charlie's twenty five and the other one's like forty.
Okay, are they village residents?
Yes.
Wow, okay, alright, what else, anything on any uh questions for the fire commissioner or for the fire chief from the board?
Happy with the uh with the charting?
The pie chart was a little busy for me, it was, yeah, and it was, it wasn't that it was busy, it was the print was so small that even with my progressive glasses. I couldn't read it, so yes, this is perfect.
I'm gonna send a note to this guy.
Yeah. Alright, moving on to the P D chief, um anything on here that jumps out, you wanna draw attention to for the. Board of trustees?
Just that we need to enter into a interminable agreement with the county hours. Participate in two thousand twenty four stuff, because you like grand part of it.
Hi.
We do it every year, it's a lot of year.
And the plan is to do it at the March twenty, remember, there's no meeting next Monday because next Tuesday, the nineteenth is the village election. Um so our meeting will be the following Monday, March twenty fifth, and at that meeting, the chief will have. That is one of our resolutions for the board to vote on, we obviously always participate in it, I see no reason why we wouldn't participate in it again this year, so. Um also, the chief and I had spoken um today, and we've been speaking uh frequently about it, but there is gonna be a need to. Hire an another part-time police officer, the chief is gonna do his due diligence and seeing what's out there in the candidate pool, but to fill vacancies. People leaving, people potentially leaving, but just looking at the list and and making, and don't forget. The board has taken under advisement um the notion of going to a fourth full-time police officer. As a means to, one, save the village money um by reducing the need for the number of part-time officers we have. Um and number two, I think, and the chief agrees, it's just, it brings more stability to the department, so um. We'll talk about that, but that, we're not gonna make a decision on that March twenty fifth, but as far as a part-time police officer. Chief's gonna look, see what's out there and then come back and advise the board, chief, I get that right?
Yes, sir.
Alright, any questions for the chief before we move on from the police department? Alright, moving on to the water department, um no, I'm sorry, Department of Public Works, David.
Uh obviously, uh it's pretty generic this time of year, but uh we are working on the board docks. The docks that we had have been uh, it's been quite a while since we did a replacement of those, so uh.
So, so. How many, how many years did we get out of these, I know I was down there the other day looking at them and you told me and I forgot.
Uh.
Sixteen years, I think Pat said.
We had these redone. I I I think they were somewhere around two thousand seven, two thousand eight, somewhere around there.
So sixteen years, about sixteen, that's what Tommy Lyons thought, yeah.
They were done then.
Now, keep in mind, um the the lumber itself, just the wood, is about eight grand, right?
Yes.
It was about eight grand, so they're stripping them down, the only things that are being salvaged and and reused will be. Well, the the metal portions, the flotation, um and then the fire hose. Are you gonna be able to reuse the fire hose, which they crinkle up to use as a buffer?
We're actually looking at some other stuff, uh I'm I'm not gonna commit to it yet, but.
Got it.
I found a couple of things that.
Got it.
Meant for marine, it might be a better choice.
So even though these things are made out of pressure-treated lumber, if you if you sit out there in the middle of the Hudson River, as long as it does. In the beating sun, you know, foot traffic on it, the the moss that's on it, the the salt, the well, the brine coming from. Storms hit them up, um I think one of the changes that's gonna happen is that the. The planks, the normal planks were like two by fours the last time, and now they're gonna go to a wider plank, so there won't be as many planks per section.
Two by six, we're all not two by eight or two by ten now.
David, with respect to the pilings, do we have to um? Last year, good, last year they weren't, last year they weren't touched either, right?
No, I think last, last year I do believe we put a couple, we put a couple in last year, but uh this year there was, we had.
We're not.
Very minimal.
You know, for some reason I kept thinking last year, we didn't have to do it again.
I thought last year we did, we did, but this year we did. Yeah.
Yeah, so we won't, we won't, we won't have to do that, uh there was no real ice events in the river, so they stayed. So we should be good there.
Alright, what else?
They don't get loosened like a tooth by other means besides ice?
That's normal, they flex. But I don't, I don't think, I don't think we're gonna have any issue.
I think it was long overdue and um and I'm glad, you know, Dave took this on and. Re- replacing them and it's just gonna be a nice facelift down there, but also safer for people walking on it and all that, so it's a good, good thing, what else?
I held off for the beginning of the budget.
Yeah.
You had mentioned you wanted to look into the possibility of some kind of longer-term replacement, but it sounds like these will last for a little while, so we can at least. Figure out what other options exist on the river.
The most difficult part, yeah, those docks will last a very long time.
Yeah.
The most difficult part is fastening and anchoring them, we're in a very bad spot, I shouldn't say a bad spot, it's a beautiful spot. But just the way the the tide with the tide and the flow coming down the river, we're.
Sideways.
They take a beating, they're not sheltered like a lot of the marinas are sheltered with brick walls and stuff, we don't have that there.
Now, one of the, one of our employees did ask me, and it's a good question, I was against it just because of the aesthetics, but asked me. Would it make sense going forward, maybe the next time we do this, to replace the planking with aluminum instead of using the natural wood? You know, I mean, maybe there's initial more uh more expensive cost investment, but then obviously it probably lasts longer. I just don't know if we wanna keep the wood because everything down there really is is wood and it's part of the natural beauty of it down there, but anyway, we didn't go that route this year.
You you go aluminum, you're gonna have to make them not slip as well, because aluminum gets really slippery.
Yeah, 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 well, you can get the ones that have the little holes. You know, punched through where they have the little grip that you can stand up, but I get what you're saying, but we're doing it, we're doing the same, we're thinking of this.
Barefoot people.
Ah, there's that too, alright, what else, Dave, anything else?
Sidewalks, I uh met with our contractor that we use for sidewalks all the time. His bid was put back in with through the county, so we're good to go with him. I had him uh give me a quote for Curry Road from the Town Village Line to.
Academy.
Avenue, which will bring it to where the state finished doing their ADA. And then we're, I got price on the curbing across from the firehouse, it's busted in front of the school and in front of painters. And that'll eat up our sidewalk budget for this year.
And you remember a couple of years ago, we expanded the sidewalk budget, um from my perspective, everything in the central business district, anything that's close to the schools. Where children walk, those are priorities, Joshua Jaski and I took a walk on Curry, I told Dave last year that. Curry was in bad state because all the sidewalks there are essentially two feet wide, some areas they're three feet. But they're also made out of asphalt, they're not like, you know, certainly not ADA compliant, but they're not concrete. Um and it does go to the village town line, the town has nothing to get you to. To Willa where the school is, so when it's not in Josh's budget this year, but when he sees what we do this year, and we walked it and we talked about. Ways to make it safe for kids to travel, cause there's nowhere for kids to travel right now, once they get to the town line without going into the road, so that is. Their plan for next year, I figured we would kinda set the, set the bar high this year by doing that. Um and then the other places, one was in front of painters, with painters looking to open, I think sometime in July now, I think that's the plan. And again, as we continue to do what we can to make our central business district a place to 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 come to and. And a place to to congregate, um there's spots in front of painters where across from Cumberland, where we did the Cumberland sidewalks. Last year, painter sidewalks are fine, but the curbing is missing, and that's just from years and years and years of. I'm not sure it's just the plows hitting it, but people hitting it or whatever, but there's large sections and then there's. Big holes where the apron comes out, where people drive out, and there's like literally a one-foot deep hole, so. Fix those and then in front of the school, because the school system and. We have a good relationship with the school system this year, which is a good thing, the school systems, Cornwall and Hudson Elementary School, where we're. Graced with the presence of the P T O president right now, not just a trustee, but also a P T O president. Um Walter Moran has informed me that they're planning on repaving, we did Maple Extension last year, right, Dave, when we did the parking lot? Or was it the year before? Might have been the year before, but they're planning on doing the uh the circular drive in front, which. Literally looks like the lunar landscape, it looks like the surface of the moon in there, and then the roadway that goes. Past the pit, past the gymnasium down there, they're gonna repave that and the sidewalks are fine there, we did the, we did the drop sidewalk. The ADA compliant one in the front last year for them, but also it's not their responsibility, it's ours. But the curbing there is in such bad shape too, we are gonna have the curbing redone in front of the school across from the firehouse.
And the apartment buildings down there on Curry Road are one of the largest uh.
Senior.
Senior areas, so.
Yeah.
Sidewalks will probably help down there for that.
Yeah, cause they are, they are uneven and again, they're they're made out of asphalt and they're broken in a couple of places, so. Appreciate it, but that is going to, so when people go, well, what are you doing this year on sidewalks, that is going to, that length of curry is gonna suck. Almost all the dollars out of our sidewalks this year, but it's definitely need, and what we do is I try to triage them with Dave, we go around every year and I say, next year, we'll try to do this. Next year this, but this year, curry is our biggest focus. What else?
Um if you wanna talk about the meeting we had the other day, ninety minutes.
Not yet.
Okay.
Yep, that's on the agenda and we'll weigh in on that, and I printed everything out, um I have not sent that. Cause I did not get a chance to read it until this afternoon, I will send all that to the board and I don't wanna hit him and surprise him, but I'm gonna, I'll talk about that when we get to that spot. Alright, moving on, the Senator from the town of Cornwall yields back to the Senator from the village of Cornwall and Hudson. What you got, Michael, anything that uh?
Um I'll just note that uh today, our Genio Brothers started doing the work at the Black Rock Filtration Plant, they're putting in the new. Sixteen inch water main, they're probably another month and a half out from putting in the new um electric actuated valve for the. Clear well up there, um you'll note that we we got awarded nine hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars through congressional spending. From Congressman Ryan, um that's gonna be used for a new water main up in the area of Ankle Road and Cedar Lane. That's one of the areas that's been underserved by a dilapidated private water line for quite some time.
How's that, um I just have a systematic question on that, Mike, so um the. Um private line is um comes off of uh. How many inch vein?
So it's a two-inch private line, it comes off of the ten inch.
Ten inch vein, okay, and that's gonna be replaced?
That's ten inch right there, Mike, the cast iron one's ten inch?
That's the main, but it's on continental, so what we're gonna do is when they put the development in for Warren Court. There's a house on Ankle Road that has a fire hydrant at the foot of their driveway, there's a future connection there that was put in nineteen eighties. For an inch water main to go up that street, that's what we'll we'll tie in there.
Okay.
And Mike, while you're talking and just as I remember this stream of consciousness, uh Senator. Um Congressman Ryan is gonna be here this Saturday, I will certainly invite the board to be in attendance, I don't know if you'll be able to stand up. Behind the podium, but I'll certainly ask, um but the congressman is.
What time is that?
Ten o'clock to ten thirty in front of Town Hall, the purpose of this. Ten o'clock to ten thirty in front of Town Hall. The purpose of this, first and foremost, is the lead sheathings. That are on some of the power lines that apparently have been coming down, and the Cornwall cleanup crew has been encountering them. Like in ditches and culverts when they're doing their cleaning, um, all around Cornwall and the village. Um, and the congressman, I guess, has got some bill he's proposing to require this to be taken care of by. Is it the foam company? Is it the electrical co- is it the? So what's, 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 what would be?
Cable did it on.
So anyway.
Cable did the whole town at one time.
Okay, so he wants that done. He's gonna do that in front of Town Hall. It did, he would have come here. It made no sense that to drag him down here to do a second on the. Water project that Mike just mentioned, and since the water project is going to be in the town, it'll probably make most sense for him to make mention of it there. He does wanna travel from there to actually go out to a site somewhere on Main Street where this lead sheeting is. To point that out, but I invite you all there. I gotta reach out from the congressman's office asking me to be there. I said, of course, Saturday sixteenth, ten o'clock in the morning. And I'm certain that he's gonna make mention of the, um, it's not a grant, it's a congressional. Yeah, but what's the official title?
Community project funded.
Yeah, but it's a, it's the congressional, uh, something spending, something discretionary. Whatever it is, but you're right. It's all, there's a lot of words in there, but anyway, he'll probably make mention of it there too, so. What else, Mike?
Um, just the only other thing was, and we're gonna discuss it under other business. The proposal to purchase a couple of, well, replace one mini excavator and purchase another one to replace the backup.
Yeah, that's down another business. Yeah, we'll talk about them. Okay, any questions for the water superintendent?
We um, where's the smart meter project?
Oh, um.
Almost.
We're still there. Um, I think we we've gotten to the point where we've done all that we can do.
Probably.
The people are, you know, there's forty-seven. Out of those forty-seven fifteen is Cornwall Park Townhouses. And we just got all those meters in. They're all one inch meters. Um, so they're all gonna get replaced. Um, so that'll put us down to about thirty-two. Out of the thirty-two, I wanna say there's nine or. Nine or ten that are currently being renovated, and the homes are vacant, so we're holding off on them until they get their. Their renovations complete, and the remainers, you know, they're they're getting billed to seventy-five dollars and. They'll pay that for foreseeable future.
You're, 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 we're never gonna get to a hundred percent. It's unfortunate, but it is what it is.
You know, our, our next step is to, now we gotta go out and find out which meters our. Um, reading system, the antennas are not working, not picking up. Cuz the, the first, the, the old generation of them only had a tenth of a watt transmitter. The new generation's one watt, and we may have to replace some of that.
All right, um, thank you, Michael. All right, moving on to New Windsor, um, EMS and Cornwall EMS. I I've. Mentioned this a couple of times prepping the battlefield, but Josh and I will soon be engaging with New Windsor in. Putting together a proposal for, I'm assuming the town and the village are gonna be. Amenable to another three-year term with um, New Windsor EMS. I think we would be in light of all the news of late about. You know, having to, you know, municipalities having to jump through hoops trying to find somebody to handle their ALS and BLS services. We're in good hands right now.
When does that initial one uh, expire? Was it mid, mid next year sometime?
Yeah, it's spring of next year. Yeah, spring of next year. Yeah, cuz I think, I think we signed it in the spring bill. But I think they came online July first, so that'll probably be the target date. So I know we've got a little bit of time. But I'm always thinking that we need to start doing that. Um, so. As I've been reading and following along in this, I mean, the average times, you know, that seem to be the, I don't wanna say it's the Mendoza line, but maybe it is the Mendoza line. It's like nine minutes for responses, and if you look at the average response times on Chief Biggs Report. Six, six minutes and forty-three seconds in New Windsor, six minutes and eighteen seconds in Cornwall. Five minutes and forty-one seconds in the village. I mean, that's just, that's just outstanding. I mean, if you have it. Something an episode, um, that's just, that's the gold standard. So, all right, you can read that, and obviously, uh. The deputy mayor will brief off this, will be more in depth for the next meeting, but just keep in mind, we are gonna need to be. Re-upping and it's gonna cost us probably a little bit more money because that's just the, the way things are. Okay, so that's that, and then, all right, moving on. I hate to do this, but I'd like to move a couple of things around, and I had to add a couple of things at the last minute. Um, and I hate doing that, but. First of all, um, on Saturday, we held voter registration in the village. It's something that we do every year as a courtesy to village residents. Um, two lovely ladies, both of them village residents come in, we pay them two hundred dollars for the five hours. What is that, forty bucks an hour? It's not like they're, they're getting rich doing this, but um, they come in and they register people to vote. Or answer their questions. Um, one of the biggest things that a lot of people don't understand, maybe I've gotta do a better job of messaging it. Is that you can't register to vote in the November elections, national and state elections. On our village voter registration day. It's only to vote in the next village election. So it's good for young folks. We've had a few of them come out. In the last five years, we registered a total of three people. So what I would suggest and say, is it a courtesy that we continue to do? And I don't mind spending money, even if it's for something you're going, we're not getting the bang for the buck. But if it's just so that there is that opportunity, or do we look next year at reconsidering. Spending four hundred dollars for a five-hour period, and trust me, the ladies wanna work. They want to register people to vote. And they had one person come in and ask a question. They wanted to know where they could vote today, and nothing else. So that's my anecdotes for the board to consider going into next year. Okay, we don't have to decide it tonight. I just wanna put that out there as, as food for thought. Okay, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move something else up really quickly. Um. So the notion of a part-time crossing guard. When I met with Josh last week and we went to the, we went to see Walter Moran over at Facilities at the middle school. And we walked Curry Road. Um, Josh is in the uh, process of hiring an additional crossing guard. Apparently Cornwall's had a number of crossing guards that they don't have anymore. Um, the village used to have two or possibly three crossing guards. We only have one now. We have Don Hogan who handles it right across. From the school at Storm King Engine Two. Um, here's what I'm gonna say. I, I know somebody asked me this question, and so I went to the source to find out. Um, I asked Harvey Sotlin, who's the Assistant Superintendent for Business at the school district. If the school system with an eighty-seven million dollar a year budget would finance it, and he said, Jimmy, as a follow-up to our conversation about crossing guards, please note. That general municipal law two zero eight dash A states that. Only cities, towns, villages, and counties may authorize and appoint crossing guards. School districts do not have the authority to employ crossing guards. So, ergo, it's back in our court, and what I would like to pitch the board on is. We do this in a, on a one-year basis. Um, we figure out when we're gonna start it. We do it on a trial basis. Um, would it make some parents happy that are working their kids at school or whose kids walk unaccompanied um, from that side of town? Um, to COH Elementary School? Of course. Is it a panacea? Is it gonna solve all of our problems? Um, is it overkill? It would cost us if we paid minimum wage, which we do right now, which is fifteen dollars per hour, two hours per day. Five days a week, that's ten hours a week during the school year, five thousand four hundred dollars a year. Um, I, I, I think the fact that we had enough parents to sign that petition requesting it says something. Um, and we all know it. Jim walks his dogs there. We all walk it. We all drive past it. We know how crazy it is. There in the morning, and maybe, and I know we're not supposed to do this, but maybe it serves for those two hours in the morning and two hours in the afternoon as a traffic calming device. For River Avenue. I didn't say that, but if that helps serve as that, what is the board's appetite for hiring an additional part-time crossing guard?
I saw a near miss there the other day, brought us Dave's attention. I'm, I'm in favor of that, for that, certainly for that money. It was very, I mean, it wasn't funny at all, but. Driving, yeah, illuminating, yeah. Driving along, I was watching somebody who had pulled partway into the crosswalk and. A mother with two kids was walking in front of the car and was looking to make sure that the driver saw them, and the driver did not look to the right and. Pulled out and the kids jumped away and then she stopped, fortunately, but yeah, that was uh, that was illuminating, so, yeah.
Jim?
Agree. I mean, I walk my dogs through there a lot and, and um, you have to move cautiously, so.
My only argument is there's so many of them. Here are two Alice's. That's not dangerous.
Yeah.
We don't have a lot of, we do have some, that's not fair, but most of them are on this side of the road and then they cross the firehouse. They stay on this side.
What I will say is that intersections where there's parking to the corner are much worse. River Avenue is bad because there is a parking spot right there. An SUV in that spot, you can't see around it at all, so.
And when you're coming out of River Road, there's also that confusion if someone's trying to turn left, and then there's someone coming out. Here, and then there's kids trying to cross. You can't, you can't have your eye in, in five different places at once.
We took a parking space away. We took a parking space away.
You'd have to take them all away.
You'd have to take them all away, and then people are gonna want it by the music store too. They argue there that where Avenue A runs that. You know, you can't, you can't pull out there without getting, you know, T-boned because there's a car parked right there.
If you put one at River, if you're coming out of Avenue A, you can walk the sidewalk, cross Idlewild, which.
I'm talking about a car. I'm talking about a car pulling out and not being able to see cuz there's a car right there, so. But yeah, I get.
That's everywhere.
All right, but are, are we, do we have consensus? Cuz I have to look into, we're probably gonna have to post for this position. I gotta go through all the.
Well, we're gonna get rid of the uh, voter registration day. Maybe that's a first.
I don't know if those two ladies wanna stand up there with a stop sign. Yeah, in the snow. That's right, in the snow. All right, so I will talk to Doris, figure out what we need to do. Is the board. Straw pole of general consensus that will do this, so we're okay. I'll find out if we need to do a motion for us to post, and we'll do that March twenty-fifth, okay? All right, moving on. Um, let's go back to the top then, since I'm jumping around. Repairs to the bandstand. Um, Dave told me, advised me about this this morning. Dave, you wanna um, let the board know what we're, what you're looking to have done there?
Well, I haven't done anything yet, but the bandstand is in need of some uh, woodworking repairs around these softens. We replaced the roof. And uh, it's, it's time. There's some uh, rot in the, so. I'm gonna reach out to a couple of local guys and see if I can get some quotes on it, see what, see what we can get in. Like to try to get it done before concert season starts.
That would be nice. That would be nice, cuz the first concert is what, May twenty-eighth? Does that sound right? Okay. All right, um, moving on. Okay, this is one that's gonna take a little bit more time, but. We need to whack through this. Um, rental policy and fees, so. Um, first off, we have like a seven or eight-page application to rent things in the village, and I asked Joe today. If he could take a look at, Doris found one from the village of Goshen. We did fix and repair the, um, you know. And put Cornwall and Hudson in here. This is just a draft to say we could turn a seven or eight-page application into a three-page app. Application, as long as the indemnification held and that we weren't doing anything to jeopardize, you know, the village or put us into um. Um, you know, state of being, you know, of, of lawsuits, things like that. So, Jim, take a look at this. She just cleaned this up. You guys should have gotten the email today. With this in it. If you didn't, please let me know and I'll have her send it tomorrow.
I only have, I had a quick look. I only had the one change is the second sentence on the front where she's saying that. Please note when reserving Donahue Farm, there's additional approval needed. It reads like. The applicant has to get an approval from scenic, and I, I, I'm just putting down it should be just, please note due to certain deed restrictions. When reserving Donahue Farm, an additional approval may be required from scenic Hudson via, via the village.
Love it. All right, yeah, can you just, can you send an email with that verbiage in there?
So I have a question about overall look of this and, and design of it. Is it recognizing that it's a legal agreement, obviously. Um, and the person is indemnifying the village, et cetera, and I just wonder if there's a way to make this a little more consumer-friendly.
Bill, that is, um, this was a project that I assigned to the village clerk, and she did. Um, a lot of research on this and really is gonna make our job easier by that, but if you think that there is a way to make this a bit more. User-friendly, I'm all ears. I mean, this is, it says draft because that's what it is. So anything we can do, as long as it. Has the things in there, we need to indemnify the village, I, 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 I want it to be as user-friendly as possible.
All right, I'll reach out to Doris.
Perfect. All right, please. All right, the next page, um, beyond that then. Are locations that can be reserved in the village of Cornwall and Hudson. All right, here's a list of them, right? So you got this thirteen, these thirteen. Um, BA stands for board approval, SH stands for scenic Hudson approval, and CA stands for. Um, clerk approval. So you've got the Donahue Farm envelope or the open space area, the Donahue Park Shelter, which is, we call. The commonly known as the gazebo, um, the Donahue Park Pavilion, which is obviously gonna be unveiled this year. The Donahue Farm Garden Plot. Um, Doris had raised that issue with me today and said. Um, if we require people to fill out permits to be on village property for these events. Why don't we do that, or should we do that? Bill, maybe this is a question for the Donahue Committee for the garden club and for the youth garden club. What happens if somebody goes down there and. Tears their knee up while they're bending down to clip the forsythias, so. Just something that we, we can ask Joe on that. The village board.
Well, they do fill out a form, and I think it might actually have some kind of.
Oh, for the garden? For the garden.
Yeah, when they, when they get a plot, they do pay. I'll, I'll find out.
Yeah.
I know they have a form, and I think there's a checkbox that says I'm not gonna see.
So things like the village boardroom and the, and the conference room. So this is, I call it the work session room. Doris calls it the conference room, so. For purposes of this, it's the conference room. If it's a not-for-profit, if it's the fire commissioners, if it's. River Fest Committee, if it's the Donahue Committee, obviously, we're not charging them to use it. But if somebody wanted to use it for something, it has not happened during my tenure here where somebody said, hey, we want to reserve that room to use it. It has not come up. Now, if it does come up, we need a policy. Um, the bandstand, um, the village hall parking lot. We donated that to the Saint Jude's Trikathon. That's an example. We've never done it. For, if the cheerleaders wanna have a car wash from Cornwall, so in my time here, we've never charged somebody to use it. The board has only approved it. But if that happens where somebody wants to use it, what do we do? Firehouse Truck Bay. Now, this is a question that I have, and since we have, you know. We have a number of firefighters and a commissioner here. Um, my understanding is that, you know, renting that out, that space out. Unless it was with a village-connected entity, not-for-profit, um, that was generally a friends and family of the firehouse, like. Do we want to make your training room or whatever you call the room where the. Where you do your training at, or the other room next door to that where the kitchen is off of? Do you wanna make that available if Mrs. McGillicuddy comes up and says that she's gonna have a roaring twenties party and she wants to bring. Sixty of her closest friends there? Is this something that you guys are amenable to?
Personally, not particularly, but um, more pragmatically, are you gonna let them in and make sure they don't go on the truck floor?
I'd really rather not, chief, but I see where you're going with this. I, I, I get it.
That's why it was always someone in.
Yeah, so, so.
Mr. Mayor, you did just say the truck floor. Um, the truck floor has gone out to. Not-for-profit groups, Lions Club, Club of the Races.
Cancer run that we, that they just did, and that I get.
Boy Scout ceremony.
Boy Scout ceremony, yeah, stuff like that, but as far as to an outside entity or, or even an inside entity, let's just say it's. Somebody wants to have their uh, their kid's first communion there. They're not associated with the fire company and they wanna rent it. Are we in the business of renting out your, your space?
We've, we've never charged our members for doing that.
Your members. I get that, yeah. So I, I just think we tread carefully on that because to your point. You guys aren't gonna come in there and say, yeah, we'll be there and we'll be security and eyes on, then whose responsibility is it? Yeah, who's, yeah, exactly. So, okay, all right.
You have millions of dollars worth of equipment there.
And there's that too, the liability piece of it, of course. Okay, um. Now Doris phrased this as, I had to get clarification on that this morning. The Donahue Park area to the south of the boat launch. That's the big field where the municipal lot is on the south end, just past the, just past the boat dock area. Not the beach area itself, but I know that we've had, um, there've been private events there. The dance studio did an event there last year, the year before.
Had a couple weddings.
Had weddings there. The hospital, I think, had a gala there, um, so that's what that area is. Um, and then village roads. Um, so that's what that area is. Um, and then Village Roads. Now Doris researched this and I said, well, what do you mean? Like, why would we charge me? Like if girls on and I'm using this because I I know the organization, if girls on the run, a not-for-profit runs a race here, we don't charge them for roads.
We don't.
Um, if the Cancer Society has a race here, we don't charge roads. And Doris said, well, what if an outside entity did? And I said, well, then we would take it under advisement. But for local not-for-profits, we never charge them. Now, if we have to bring extra police on, we have to bring. Extra guys in to handle cleanup trash, that's a different thing. Alright, so cut to the chase.
Closed the roads for uh the Tressel's anniversary party once.
Why do I vaguely remember that? Is that the Cornwall Tournament? Yeah, I remember that.
They had dunk tanks and stuff and then the other area down by.
But we don't charge people.
Street they have.
But we don't charge people for block parties.
They go and ask us for road closed up, back and stuff like that. We never we never charge them for it, but there should be a permit. There should be a permit for it.
Okay, I got you.
I think, yeah, we've had for block parties, they've gotten permits.
We've done it. We've done it for Duncan Avenue.
Of course, Duncan Avenue.
You don't want riffraff, you know.
Right. Alright, so let me give you the method of madness here. So so what I so what I asked Doris to do. Is take a look at other communities and what they charge to give us a better sense. So she pulled up the Orange County Department of Parks, Recreation and Conservation, their fee schedule. She pulled up the Village of Walden, their recreation and parks um applications. She pulled up New Windsor regarding Plum Point Park and San Giacomo's Park and the Dog Park. Um, and looked at those and then Doris came up with these numbers, which she and I discussed this morning. I'm not married to them. I think good thought went into them and she's matching them up against others. So. If you turn to this sheet right here with the yellow with the yellow box at the bottom of it, this one right here, Bill, this one, Dave, this one. You should have a copy of that. There it is. Alright, so if you look at it, um, you know. Use of the gazebo down at Donnie U Memorial Park and the lawn area there, alright, we never double booked those. So my thing with the pavilion was, are we gonna book it in the morning and then let people have it the afternoon? We have generally speaking in the village, when we did the the gazebo is just given, if somebody was using it for two hours or four hours or six hours. They had it for that day. So the use of the gazebo and lawn area, less than fifty people, less than ten cars, resident hundred dollars. Non-resident two hundred, not-for-profit a hundred. So I said to Doris, town of Cornwall considered a resident? And she goes, well, no. And I'm like, well, we can't charge the town Cornwall residents. Yes, I think the village should have. You know, the best rate because we're responsible. We have to, we got skin in the game. But the town shouldn't be paying the same amount that somebody from New Windsor or Newburgh or Walden or Walk Hill pays. So I think we should adjust that. I just wanna throw this out. We're not we're not settled on this tonight. I want you guys to look at this. You do you think it should be the same? Now, they have no, it's the same thing with water. They have no responsibility. It's not their police. It's not their DPW. It's not their garbage pickup.
They don't charge us extra to use the pool.
But we pay town taxes, don't we?
We sure do.
Town residents don't pay village tax.
That's a big sticking point. Yeah, see, I think that there should be a sliding. Are you running for town council? No, I think um.
No, you're right.
Yeah, something something nominal, but I said to Doris, we need to come up with uh village resident, town resident.
Yes.
Um, non-resident, because town residents are residents here. So non-resident and then a not-for-profit, you know, okay.
Oh, I um, is the sticker more, is your uh car sticker more for town?
Yeah.
How much more? Dollar?
Not much.
Five for village, ten for town.
Okay, okay, so yeah, so we'll adjust it. We'll make it a little bit more.
Okay, so we'll do so we'll do village resident, um, we'll do town resident, we'll do non-resident. Um, and then we'll do not-for-profit, non-resident.
Looks like we've set the not-for-profit prices the same as the resident prices for every everything, so.
Yes.
We could save some lines on this table if we just put it as resident and not-for-profit.
Bill, yes, yeah, I mean, like I said, Doris did yeoman's labor in putting this together, but you're. No, 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 what I'm saying is, but yes, for readability purposes, since we're 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 gonna fix that. So you just look down, you see how these things are 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 done. Obviously, um, you know, I looked at her and I said, whoa, so the Donnie U Farm envelope. If somebody wanted to reserve that, so two thousand for a resident, non-resident, four thousand dollars. And she goes. I'm just going off of what other local communities have with a piece of property that size. So again.
Yeah, but there's no number.
And we're not in a position right now to be to be renting that house for anything. But I'm saying, going forward, we need to be thinking about. What are we gonna charge?
Somebody wants to put up a nice tent and have a nice wedding there, you know, that's that's a.
It's a fair price.
Yeah, that's expensive.
Yeah, yeah.
That's expensive.
Okay, so.
One of the things, just so you know, I mean, county's expensive. The county using county facilities.
Of course, yeah, it ain't cheap.
They charge a chronometer. They charge by the hour. It's expensive and it's prohibited. Nobody goes there.
So so can I ask the board, here's what my goal is, and I don't wanna go past this. Um, May first, I'd like us to be in a position where we have all of this figured out. I'm not looking to vote on this on March twenty fifth, but in April, um, I'd like to talk about this at the business meeting, so I'd ask you guys to please. And lady to go back and take a look at this, come back with your thoughts on this, and then we debate this at the April work session. And we solidify it so that we can vote on it at the April business meeting. Alright. When it comes to the pavilion, and this is really the only thing that I think is gonna have this much of a demand. Because we're already getting swamped with reachouts on it. Um, I do believe we need to have a sliding scale of scheduling. So village residents can schedule it six months out. Town residents can schedule it four months out and non-residents can schedule it two months out. Now, if it doesn't get filled by a village or town resident and it gets to the two-month window and a non-resident locks it in. A village resident can't come back then and jump in and say, no, 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 we want this. You have the right to to reserve it earliest. But then, once it's booked, it's booked. Alright, is everybody in agreement with that? Is six, four, two makes sense? Okay, alright, good. Alright, can you take a look at this though, please, and be prepared to further discuss this?
Required, gonna have to.
Yes, we'll do all those things. We'll 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 do all those things.
That, based on that, the cost looks a little bit low to me, especially if we're talking.
Cost on which one?
The pavilion specifically.
On the pavilion, alright, let me.
And I we'll talk, if you wanna talk about it in a later.
Yep, 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 yep.
But just because, you know, you you could rent it, like a village residence could just rent it. Six months in advance for a hundred and fifty dollars.
And just hold it. Yes, 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 yes. That is that is a good point.
What if Mrs. McGillicuddy wants to have her yoga class there three days a week, ten to twelve? How much does she charge? How much should we charge her?
Should these be weekend rates? Weekend rates should maybe be different than during the week rates.
Yeah.
Peak versus low.
Yes, yes.
Summer.
Okay.
October, thousand dollars now congestion pricing.
Congestion pricing. Why don't we charge the New Yorkers coming up here? We'll charge them a million bucks.
Steve's gotta figure that out.
Okay, alright, can you guys do this for me, please? Just take a look at this and be prepared to discuss it at the next meeting, please, okay? I we just gave you a template, just something to work off of, okay? Alright, moving on to the next item of business. Um, bench policy, and I need to get back to Mrs. Hall about that. I owe her a phone call because, you know. Bill Hall, who's a longtime Cornwall resident, who passed away recently, his children wanted to do a bench for him and the board still has a. Hip pocket, since I don't think we ratified it, but a hip pocket moratorium on putting benches down at the waterfront. I spoke to Dave about this the other day and Dave suggested that there are a couple of spots that maybe we could do at the bandstand. The bandstand, like maybe along the stone wall there, put a couple of small pads down and then put a couple of benches there and maybe I would offer that to Mrs. Hall. But I don't think we're ready.
Inside the park at the bandstands?
At the bandstand, like because people sit on the wall. Dave stalks where you put a couple of benches there.
At least two to watch.
Two, uh, yeah, you don't wanna line the entire thing with it, but.
Kinda like the the wall seating, like I like the way.
I don't think people would be against it and then a bench.
I thought about where the where the sidewalk was, where Mr. Gould's art place is, where the Christmas tree is, like where the sidewalk is, putting a couple along there. Or even tucked in on the other side of the Christmas tree to there. Okay, alright. Why don't sometime this week, when the weather's nice, you and I walk it and we'll find a couple of spots.
There used to be one on the uh corner uh on the Duncan Avenue side after Dr. Seis's office. There used to be one right there.
Well, there used to be two, in fact, Mr. Gould's painting from nineteen eighty-six of the bandstand in my office. There are two sitting in front of. In in front of the bandstand out on the sidewalk.
And there was also two in front of the jewelry store at one time, too.
Now you're going back.
So there's also the uh, I I keep meaning to like, I keep meaning to like draw on a map, but the. Guard guardrail, guide rail.
Guide rail.
Yes, that needs to be turned into wood.
Memorial Park that lines the parking lot. It's uh currently metal. I think we're proposing to change it into.
They could all be lined with.
But right on the other side of that, facing out onto that lawn, you could probably put four or five.
You'd be amiable to that.
Yeah, because it doesn't block the line of the river.
Didn't we also discuss, and again, this would and it wasn't part of our New York Ford ask, but we also talked about potentially taking that guardrail out. And putting a stone, like a stone wall there.
The bare mountain look was kinda the wish.
Yeah.
But if we did, just right on the other side of it, you have benches with their back to the cars looking out at the.
I'm not against that at all. People could park their car right there, get right out, sit down right there.
Actually, Rich Joy's idea of the wall was a great idea with plaque in it, but but. It's gonna get hit and it's very expensive to repair. What?
Went to the municipal parking lot.
Look at this.
Have a look at the wall.
It's really expensive.
Wooden posts in front of the wall so the cars hit them instead of the wall.
Yeah.
So in any case, bench location. There's also tree locations in uh Donnie U Farm. I keep meaning to.
Yes, we need to do that. People ask about that a lot.
But there are, and and does the Donnie U Committee have a list of appropriate indigenous?
I have it.
Alright.
I have it on my phone.
Good, alright.
CCAC.
I have it.
Oh, yeah, that's that's true. Um, alright, next item, um, the IMA. The IMA with Orange County D W I, Chief, we're gonna have that all ready and set to go for March twenty fifth, sir? Alright, notice of the Easter breakfast and annual fair planned by Storm King Canyon Company Number Two. Chief, anything to add to that? Any nuggets of information or things the board should know?
Nope, that's just something that the park company is required to provide to the village.
Why is it required to?
That's what the law says.
Are you funding me? The law, what law?
State law.
State law says that you have to have an Easter breakfast at the firehouse?
That they have to notify the village.
Oh, I'm like, I'm like, I'm like, but everybody doesn't celebrate Easter. What are you?
Okay, is there a special ceremony for informing the village? I think we should have an acknowledgement of a notification.
Yeah, we across the street at uh Pepatini's. Alright, so um, so that will, is that require resolution? Probably, right? No, just a board?
State law, it's just that you're notified of our fundraising activities.
That's it, okay, got it. Now it makes sense.
What's the dates for the?
Easter, right?
Yeah, it's on Sunday.
So it's Sunday. Alright, hold on, alright, hold on, hold on. It is going to be. April twenty eighth. Wait a minute, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry, March thirty first. I'm sorry.
Next week.
March thirty first.
That's not next week, please.
And I am out of it. I am out of it.
Actually, that's vacation.
Alright, yeah, sure. Okay.
And the annual fair is ended up last week of July.
July seventeenth through twentieth.
Okay, alright, next item of business, disclosure form online. So every year. All village employees, including elected officials, have to fill out a a disclosure form for the Ethics Committee. Of which uh John Ross, um, Brandy McLendon and Bradley Lavalley. Are members of, then go through that to make sure that we are all in compliance with, you know, uh, not having issues of. Corruption or graft or all those other kind of things or, um, so the form that we normally fill out is a paper form. It's pretty easy. But because it requires it being sent in, um, the Ethics Committee has requested that we go online with this, which I am all for. Fewer trees get killed. Um, Joe McKay, I spoke to him about it tonight, is just gonna check. We we may have to change our code. That is specifically written, like you can't tie your horse up in front of village hall and you also have to mail this in with a stamp and. You know, seal the seal the envelope to make sure that we can do it that way. But this year, we're trying to move to an electronic version of the disclosure form. Alright, I'll keep everybody in in tune with where we are with that. Joe is looking into it right now for me. We may have to tweak our code. Okay, um, cybersecurity assessment proposal. Michael, you wanna handle this?
Yeah, sure.
Can you handle this?
I can. So as part of the water system, public water supplies, vulnerability assessment, we have to perform a cybersecurity assessment. Of all of our operational hardware and software, as well as our business software, meaning our billing system. Um, this is required to be done every five years. We last did it in two thousand twenty-two. We did a very generic one, uh, which I completed, but they require a more uh in-depth. Um, assessment done by somebody who is actually certified to do this stuff. Um, I reached out to New Windsor IT. They don't offer this service. They advised to speak to our engineers. Our engineers were like, yeah, we don't do that either. So I was able to get in touch with Fish Solutions. They're from the uh city of Newburgh. Um, they actually do some work for the for the fire services in Orange County. They offered two different prices. One, to do a cyber assessment, just the water system, computers and software. Uh, I think that was around eleven hundred ninety-eight dollars and he offered he can do the entire village as well for twenty-one ninety-eight. Um, I think you if you see recently a lot of the comptroller's office has been required in it. Um, municipalities and a lot of the, I don't wanna say violations, but the the commentary comes back to your cyber policies. Such as changing passwords, uh, multiple authentication, stuff like that. Um, so at the very least, we have to do the water system, but I would recommend doing it system-wide, village-wide. Because our billing system overlaps with the village's financial software. And there is some um, private information in there with people paying their bills with credit cards and. And and other things.
So the twenty-one ninety-eight is the water system and the rest of the village infrastructure.
Yeah.
Anybody have any objections or versions of that?
Does have to be bid out?
It's twenty-one hundred dollars.
Three quotes. I've attempted.
Oh, nobody does it?
You you should try.
Well, you have to get somebody with the correct uh.
Oh, I see.
To get the correct security credentials.
Yeah.
I reached out to one company. I forget the name of it off the top of my head. They do the town of Walk Hill. Um, there are some that will come in and do it, but they wanna do it as part of a larger service. They'll do it for us if they have our entire IT contract.
Oh, yeah.
But they don't wanna do it as a one-off contract.
Gotcha.
And they'll, when they're done with this, they'll make recommendations as to what kind of policies we should have and so on and so forth.
Anybody have problems with it?
No, I think we have to do it.
Mike, it's gonna require resolution and the.
We could, yeah.
Yeah, let's do that for the business meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, moving on, uh, to mini excavator purchases. Alright, keep going.
Um, so this started out, we have to replace our backhoe. We have a a mini excavator now and a backhoe. Um, the backhoe is twenty-two years old. We sent it out to get an estimate on what it would cost to repair. It's twenty-three thousand dollars to repair it. Um, to purchase new, it's a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Um, we only use it as a backup machine for digging as well as filling our trucks with backfill material. Um, it's really more or less a yard vehicle, um, but in speaking with Dave here. Um, earlier this year, we thought about buying a second mini excavator simply because with all the. Hyper-localized storms, uh, we've both been looking to use the same machine. Um, and exactly. So what we did was we looked at it. We can purchase a a Kubota KX thirty-three for sixty-one thousand dollars, I believe it is.
Yeah.
Um, and at the same time, we can replace our existing back or existing mini excavator, which is five years old. We purchased it, we purchased it five years ago for sixty-one thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars. They're willing to give us a trade-in on it for forty-eight thousand five hundred. Uh, which means our depreciation cost was about fifteen thousand dollars over five years.
Yeah, that's crazy.
Which means we we really only paid three thousand dollars a year for it. Which means we, we really only paid three thousand dollars a year for it, we're gonna be replacing it, um, for thirty-one thousand dollars. Um, so the total price would be ninety-two thousand for both machines. I expect that we'll be able to get ten to twenty thousand dollars when we surplus the, the backhoe to pay that down.
Like what, why?
You have a picture of that, Mike?
The.
The KX thirty-three, uh, what size machine is that, is that the big one?
No.
Is that the middle, middle sized one?
No, ours, the, the KX fifty-seven that we currently have is second to largest. The KX thirty-three is two hours.
You haul that on standard trailer?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do we need a trailer too?
We already got that.
Okay. One trailer new though, one new trailer?
Yep.
One new trailer, two machines.
Yeah, well, we already, we'll have two machine, two trailers for both machines, we got one for each machine.
Right, but we're not buying it, oh, we're buying a new trailer for both.
We already bought the new trailer out of last year's budget.
Okay, so why, so why replace the, the KX fifty-seven?
So you don't get stuck with it twenty years down the road and have to pay three hundred thousand dollars for a new one? This way, you're, you're getting a good return on your funds.
So what's the difference between the newer one and the existing one?
Um, just it's got new safety features and this way you're, you're staying out of that long-term maintenance costs. Cause what we're doing, when you buy them on state bid, it's a twenty-six percent discount.
Yeah.
So that's the only reason why.
It's like, how much did you trade it?
No, it is.
Really?
It is.
So essentially in your, it, the way you're looking at it is about every.
Every five or six years.
Kinda like our police department vehicles, about every five or six years, we.
But those are leased to own though.
Yeah, 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 well, but, I mean, that's, that's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm analyzing.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
What you're saying to me is that five years from now, well, I'm not gonna be around on this board probably, but. Five years, now you'd be coming back saying, hey, I wanna, I wanna.
It's just, it's just, it's a regular, it's a regular replacement.
I got it, I, I don't have, I don't have a, I don't have a problem with it, I just wanted to know.
So you get the best return on it?
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
You see what we're, Dave wanted, I think, to do a few years ago was this. And you get stuck with high maintenance costs.
Alright, anybody have any objections to proceeding as Mike is, uh, advocating?
I don't know, I feel like we just saved fifty thousand dollars somehow, even though we're buying stuff.
He's supposed to make you think that, Bill. He's a salesman.
Look over here.
Listen, you could do it every year and actually this month, every month.
No, the thing of it is though, it, when you break it down to what it, you, by having that machine, you save three thousand dollars for every day you use it.
Right, cause you're not renting.
And you're not renting, you're paying the operator or anything.
Using the term save very loosely.
Well. How much is it now? How much is it? How much does it cost?
Seventy-nine nine, this KX thirty-three is sixty-one thousand, the KX fifty-seven is seventy-nine, but we're getting forty-eight thousand back.
Okay, and that's a twenty-five or a twenty-four?
Twenty-four.
Okay.
So even if you were to save, you know, over the course of twenty years, it would still cost you thirty thou, or three thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
But you'd have the long-term maintenance cost to go along with that twenty years.
A twenty-one, a twenty-one, a twenty-two used is fifty-one five.
No, Dave, they do not wanna buy your horse and your plot.
Yeah.
We don't need it.
So Mike, we're looking.
How much does the backhoe work?
Anywhere from ten to twenty, depends, you know, if, if we, if we put the twenty-three thousand into it, we could probably get fifty.
What kind is it?
It's a Case five eighty.
So we're looking to do the resolution on this as March twenty-fifth.
As well as declare the, the Case backhoe surplus.
Okay.
Alright, and just to confirm what I think is implied here is that the, uh, two mini excavators will. Duplicate the work that we can get it out of the backhoe.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we have a loader too, Bill, so the loader's gonna take the place of that backhoe in the yard.
As, as a wise man at once said, as one you have none, or you have two, you have one.
Yeah, yeah, and if you have two backs, you have no quarterbacks.
That's true.
Well, that's true for the Falcons.
Well, no, they got, they just signed Kirk Cousins today. Get it up Falcons. Alright, let's move on, um, so last week, um, the Water Superintendent, the DBW Superintendent and I had a. Ninety-minute meeting with the USDA, this was the, this was the agency that came out in the wake of the. July ninth, two thousand and twenty-three major weather event. Where we had the seven inches of water in a three-hour period and a hyper-localized storm. That hung over us and really did the most damage to the village of, of any of the storms. So they told us they were preparing a report and we were already moving forward with our FEMA asks. Now, our FEMA asks are in the range of between the Water Department, which is just over one million. And the Highway Department, which is the rest, just around two point nine million dollars. Now with that, remember, um, if we get that, it is a seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent split when these things happen. So the village will be on the hook for a quarter of whatever grant money we get, we've gotten some monies, but we've obviously not gotten the big monies yet. Um, with that in mind, this other federal agency, United States Department of Agriculture, which I was struck when they said they were coming in. To be boots on the ground, we're like, what the hell do you have to do?
I know, they got nothing to do.
Nobody lost a farm here, what's the problem?
No animals.
But, um, they have a program called E W P or the Emergency Watershed Protect, yes, you absolutely. Um, emergency water, and Bill, I'm gonna send all you guys, all of this, I just got it today and I just sorted through it this afternoon. So I will get you an electronic version of this tomorrow, but they put together a report, Mike and I, um, they went through it. Mike and Dave and I went through it, there were a couple of things that we had to clean up in here and a couple of things that were inaccurate, not their fault, but. Some mistakes and things that we had to fix, um, the biggest thing is, is that we are looking at. Um, about four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars worth of total project cost from them. The reason we had the meeting with them was to see what we had already put in for with FEMA. And what we were asking from USDA and trying to fit the right program, the right agency. To get the best chance to get the money, cause there is no double dipping. If FEMA funds something, USDA drops out, if USDA funds something, FEMA drops out, you can't take a partial from here and a partial from here. Again, with the USDA, um, we're talking about a seventy-five, twenty-five split, so let's just say that. When they trimmed down some of the ones that went to FEMA, we're looking at probably somewhere just under three hundred thousand dollars, the village will be on the hook for twenty-five percent of that. But the, the type of work that they do, um, is substantial as far as. Let's just take the Boulevard, for example, everybody's familiar with the four houses, five houses on the Boulevard as you're going down the Boulevard headed toward the Hudson Island Nature Museum. So you come off of Pace and Road and those homes there, that is a declared flood zone by FEMA standards. And you walk around out there and there's actually, they, they pulled plant life out and said, this is, this plant only grows in a marsh. And that's somebody's backyard there, um, the two things that they can do is they can provide recovery monies to people that had damages. But you have to prove that there have been multiple flooding, so if you had one huge flood event on July night, that does not count, there's to be multiple floodings. And the other option is the buyout, the buyout is where they come in, there has to be a sponsor, which means it would be the village. They come in and they provide, is it three quarters?
Yeah, I think it was three quarters.
Seventy-five, twenty-five, the village would have to pick up that other twenty-five and they would buy that property out. Give the homeowner that so they can go move somewhere else and then obviously the, there would be a raising of the prop, of the building. And you would just turn that area into, you know, a flood plain, um, yeah. Nothing, none of the homes that were hit the worst. And on July ninth, the ones that were hit the worst were at the bottom of Mountain Road.
Yeah.
And along Boulevard and the two at the end of Pace and, those are the ones that got hit the worst. None of those homes qualified for the buyout, now as far as recovery operation, that's a separate thing, I'm trying to fight for a couple of them where. Maybe the way that they had assumed that the damages were not accurate and trying to explain to them, no, this was somebody's first floor here. But it's also interesting because we got maps from them of the area at the bottom of Mountain Road and what is considered a flood plain. Uh, they do it by percentages, you know, this one is a fifty percent zone, this is a one percent zone. Um, so very interesting education from them, so the bottom line is, they are working with us. The biggest things I think that they're gonna be able to provide for us is the stream bed on the backside of the Boulevard home. So when water comes off the mountain, it comes down into two, two sluices, if you will, then it joins together and ends up. Down at the bottom by Hudson River, they will come in there and they agree that needs to be dredged out and they will do that work. They're the experts on that and knowing how to return it to a state that it should be in. Because if stuff washes off the mountain and then it comes down and it jams up our pipes, jams up our stormwater drains, that our guys have to keep clear. But it starts piling up on the edges, it continues to fill up that, that culvert there. And then the culvert just starts to do this and it flattens out and then where does that water go, onto people's properties? So, Dave, Mike, um, I know Mike, there was a water project, Dave, there was a number of projects around those homes, what, what am I, what did I leave out in that general overview?
Well, we're looking, we're looking at the, uh, the Boulevard, which I, I don't know if, if they actually committed to dredging or they're just gonna provide the funding for us to.
Right.
Secure the.
Somebody to do it.
To do it, they also looked at one of the box culverts on the mountain.
Yeah.
They want, they agreed to take that, we had FEMA looking at that too, so we just gotta, I haven't got the exact numbers back, I'm still waiting for Jason. We're moving forward with it, but we might withdraw that depending on what FEMA. And there's another spot up around in, uh, one nineties on Mountain Road that they are willing to look at. Because they, they won't do anything with roads or. Anything like that, uh, putting roads back or road damage, but the. Damage to infrastructure and like the adjoining property.
But as.
So it'll help out.
But as you can see from the report, and I will get one of these for each of the trustees, this is a public report, so the public is entitled to see it, there's nothing. Secret or, you know, top secret here, but they, we took them to all the different locations and they took copious photographs, they took video. And then they went back and worked on this and, you know, looked at what would meet their programs constraints. So that's what we're just trying to do, we're trying to figure out where we get the best bang for the buck and making sure we cover as much as possible. It's not gonna be a panacea and the village is gonna be on the hook for some of these repairs, um, and remediation, but at least it's a, it's a help. And the people that we were dealing with, they're New York State folks, they're the ones that put it together and then it goes to, to USDA. But USDA is generally gonna follow along the lines of what their recommendations are.
The state might pick up half of the twenty-five percent on FEMA.
So what I'd love to see is the.
Oh, so. So Dave, so Dave, that's a, that's a good point, real quick, um, so what Dave just mentioned is the seventy-five, twenty-five split. Um, New York State Legislature is looking at possibly trying to provide relief to municipalities for that twenty-five percent. Whether or not that happens or not, I don't know, but they are, um, seeking to see if they can defray some of those costs by helping us with that.
But that would only be on the FEMA funding, the USDA.
Only on FEMA.
During Irene, they picked up the twelve and a half percent, it, it.
It did help.
Yeah, it helped, it helped a lot with us because some of the, uh, in-kind services count.
Yeah, so Senator Scoofus's office is working on that and will keep us in the loop, we submitted all of our project asks for FEMA to them. So they know what the amounts are and what we're looking to have done and then they're gonna try to seek, and we do get approved for them, the twenty-five percent. Okay, I'll get this out to the, uh, trustee, go ahead, Mike.
On the water, so there's not gonna be any water projects funded through them because they, they feel FEMA's better suit. The one, the one interesting thing is that the stream bank heading up to our Black Rock filtration plant. Um, it's not gonna qualify because in their opinion, that a lot of the damage was sustained from a previous storm. Which goes back to Irene.
Irene, yeah.
So.
Right about that.
They're saying is if we had fixed it then, and if we fix it now, future storms, it'll be covered. So that's just a, another way of, you know, hate to use the term of kick the can, if we don't kick the can down the road, we fix it now. We'll, we'll be making ourselves eligible for funding down the road if it happens again.
Yeah. Alright, so I'll keep the board in the loop on that and I will, uh, get that packet out to you guys tomorrow. It's interesting, so I mean, you know, it's a lot of pages, but it's, it's, it's a good read, you know the locations and you'll see what their assessments were, so. I'll send that out to you guys tomorrow, um, next item is Vet Rep and, um, I already let the board know this, but I'm. I'm disappointed, but I understand the reasoning why, but Vet Rep, um, has decided to. Withdraw their application for Savage Wonder Festival that was gonna be held in October down at the Donahue Farm property. Um, and they are moving that operation to Beacon. Um, Beacon apparently made them an offer of a location there that just, um, suited their needs perfectly. Um, and they're going to move essentially their, their playhouse, which right now they're operating out of a, out of an old home across the street from the old De Chico's. And they had purchased the, uh, Shadane property, which is around the corner behind the Chico's, um. But now that's kind of up in the air, the Lemon Building is where they're going to put their base of operations, they're gonna turn that into the Imaginarium. And that's essentially where they're going to have their headquarters, so they will be remaining in Cornwall. Um, but they will do all of their productions, their big productions out in Beacon at a playhouse that they're building out. And they will do Savage Wonder out there, so this, this automatically begs the question, well, what happens to the two asks that they put in for the New York Ford funding? Um, Christopher Paul Meyer, who is the CEO or COO, for lack of a better, um, term. Of Vet Rep came to see me last week to fill me in on it, um, they have been in contact with the Department of State, the Department of State is the. Part of the government up in Albany that handles the, the dispersment of, uh, of New York Ford funding. And they know that they are standing down on the Shadane property, so that project was one of our ten will now be removed. Which leaves us with nine, so same pot of money, four point five million dollars, but nine. And they are still in on the Imaginarium, the old Lemon Building across from Prima Pizza, um, for turning that into a. A cool theater and a bar and a, you know, rooftop restaurant, well, not restaurant, but rooftop bar and artwork and. You know, art displays and all that kinda stuff, so I'm disappointed to see them go, but they gotta do what's in the best interest for them. But that takes one thing off of our plate as we were working through, Senior Hudson was, was, was being a good. Um, was being a good partner in the sense of trying to figure out a way to get the yes for that operation. But it will not be something the board needs to entertain any longer, alright? There should be a press release, which I shared with the board, the draft one, but should be, either went out today or maybe yesterday or, or tomorrow, so just keep your eyes open for that. Okay, moving on, but they will still be doing things in Cornwall, so don't forget that and we'll wait to see what happens at the Imaginarium.
Building, yeah?
Yeah, but Bill, it's like, um, some of it's in his name and some of it's owned by Vet Rep. So I think they're trying to work out what makes the most sense right now that, are they gonna sell something, are they gonna keep it in Vet Rep? So they're working on all that stuff, but yes, they did buy that property, they're leasing the property they're in right now. Okay, moving on to summer playground update, so tomorrow morning, are you still coming with us? Tomorrow morning at eleven-thirty, myself, uh, the Director of Facilities for the Cornwall Central School District, um, um, um. Walter Moran, um, the supervisor for the town, uh, Laura Kirby and Phyllis Murphy from, this is gonna be a whole. Troop, troop of folks in the middle of the school day, we were trying to do this like before school, after school and Walter's like, nah, no worries, we'll get you through there. So we're gonna go take a look at, um, C O H Elementary School to figure out how to do a conjoined camp there. Now, the people that ask, well, why if the school system is making it available to go back to separate camps this year? Because they're gonna allow Lee Road to be operated and they're gonna allow C O H Elementary School to be operated. Because we know that next year they have to be conjoined again because phase two of the, of the build-out and construction will be. Conducted next summer and C O H Elementary School is gonna have all new windows put in, so that will be offline. Extended school year, special needs kids or, or kids that need the extra school time, um, last year was at C O H Elementary School. This year it's going back to Willow where it typically operates out of and that's where it will remain. The reason why it made more sense to move it here to do it conjoined with the town is because there will still be work done at Lee Road. They're still gonna be doing ceilings and work in the parking lot, the playground area and all of that. So this year, other than them doing that paving, which will happen probably before the end of the school year, no work will be done at Cornwall and Hudson Elementary School. And from my perspective and from our perspective, I think it's nice to bring the conjoin back here, it was conjoined last year in the town. It'll be conjoined this year here in the village and then it'll go back to the town next year and then beyond that, we'll either split them and go back to our own. Schools and our own, our own, you know, venues, or we'll make a determination that makes more sense. I'll tell you this, when I heard that we were gonna have to run our own camp with no infrastructure, competing for the same young kids to be camp counselors. Understanding it's gonna cost us more money because minimum wage has now gone up, we're not paying thirteen dollars an hour, we're paying fifteen bucks an hour. Which means all the salaries are gonna be bumped up understandably and we didn't have a director, we didn't have an assistant director, um, we would have to start from scratch. With the town running it and they would still run it, if we do it at C O H Elementary School, the village cuts them a check. The board budgeted fifteen thousand dollars, that's what we paid last year, it will be more than that this year. Um, and one of the things I want the board to consider, if we had split the camps, I'm convinced that we needed to go to five hours a day instead of the four hours a day that we've historically done. We do nine to one. The town always does nine to two and I would have wanted us to go to nine to two, cause I just think it's, it's tough for working parents. So we'll know tomorrow. Lloyd Beth has some reservations about trying to do it with all the kids at that location. We're gonna take a look tomorrow and see how this can be worked out. We do have the benefit of the playground that's our own, a field that's our own, the apron in front that's our own, the auditorium that's available, the pit, uh, the pit gymnasium that's available. The only downside is that the cafeteria at Lee Road is a box and it is cavernous and huge. And the one here at COH Elementary School, for any of us that have been there, is a long linear and it will be tight. It is air-conditioned though and the one in town is not, so that's a benefit.
We get the firehouse bay right across the street.
Yeah, Chief said he would be more than willing to handle a group of kids. Thirteen bucks an hour, you're good with that?
Just hand him the keys to the truck.
All right, so any questions?
What is the population difference? Like how many?
So we would do, we would do the same thing we did last year. We would, we would do one twenty-five and one twenty-five. Um, the nice thing is again, that by doing this, we don't have to do anything. We don't have to do registration. It would be run out of the town. They now are doing it online this year. So when they open up registration, you'll be able to do that online instead of having to physically go in. And obviously we'll make it available for village residents up to one twenty-five, town residents up to one twenty-five. And then if there's any space there, then people outside of the village and the town.
And our, our usual number is like one thirty-five, I remember the year before last.
Yeah, but, but Bill, you probably average on an average. I only know this cause Jenna ran it. Not even that, Dave, because you got, nineties, because you got people on vacation.
The first day, the first couple of days.
Yeah, yeah, but you, but you're averaging, I think Jenna told me she was averaging between ninety-five and a hundred per day. That's probably. But you're registered for one twenty-five. You gotta be prepared for one twenty-five. You gotta have enough counselors there. You gotta have all the things. Yeah, yeah, now, um.
I have a lot of thoughts.
Eh, yes, and one of the things too is if we were doing it on our own again this year, we would have had to raise the fees. We were charging half of what the town was che- was charging. And the argument can be is our camp is just as robust and just as involved and has just as many things. So, but hopefully we don't have to get to that, but we'll see tomorrow. Maybe you'll see something tomorrow. All right, all right. Okay, um, that's the summer playground update. Um, boardroom carpet install starts tomorrow. So one of the things that, uh, that Dave's, I'm sorry, Wednesday, tomorrow is Tuesday, you're right. Um, our guys ripped out to save money. Our guys ripped out all the carpet, which has been there for a hell of a long time. And I think the village got its money's worth out of it. Um, we're gonna put a pad down this time. Um, and then carpet, we found something like this, but it's darker, but it's obviously durable and stains will blend into it better than what we have back there now, but it was ready for an update.
Call it for you.
Yeah. My, my mother-in-law christened the carpet last time when she came in for something and a full cup of Starbucks went on the floor. I'm like, yeah. So anyway, um, but it'll be ready for election day on Tuesday. It'll be ready for the following Monday for our, um, for our business meeting. Okay, um, good news was right after we did the, um, the disbursement of the municipal tourism grant award. Um, we got notified that additional four thousand, as we expected, but still was nice to see it, four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Obviously I'm putting in for that. I will keep you advised on it. And then in, at respect to Bill, we will take a look at, at looking at something different, cause I know there are also other, there are also other, um, groups that said, hey, we're, we're, we're helping out with tourism too. What about us next year? So it'll be, we'll tackle that then.
That pony up.
Yeah, so, okay, so that's that. I'll keep everybody in loop on that. Moving on to, um, dates. Um, Mr. Chair, March twelfth, six P M fire commission meeting is here. That's tomorrow night? Outstanding, all right. And you're gonna talk to Doris, but making sure the doors get popped open so you guys can get in and out. Okay, all right, perfect. Uh, March thirteenth, um, here, which is Wednesday, seven P M Riverfest meeting. And then March nineteenth, which is next Tuesday, so a week from tomorrow, six AM to nine P M, the hotly contested village election will take place. So what's the over-under on turnout? Anybody wanna give me the over-under on turnout? What are you expecting? One fifty? No, I think we'll be, I think we'll have more than that. Anybody else?
Just saying.
Nobody's running. They're right here in the room. Mean.
Yeah, I'm gonna set the over-under at, I'm gonna set it at four.
Tell me about it.
I'm going to four hundred.
Wow.
So you guys are going under, okay, all right. You're gonna take the under? All right.
In a trusty uncontested one.
Yeah. You're taking the under?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Okay, all right.
Possibly well under.
Possibly well under.
There've been ones where it was.
There have been, yeah.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be the same one to come and ask a question or order registration day.
All right.
That person's coming, I can finally move.
I just.
You have a planning board update on the.
Oh, I sure did. I'm sorry on that. So I met with Maureen Spalding, um, who has been on the planning board for a number of years. She was appointed by Mayor Coin and then she was appointed, um, chair of the planning board. And she's done that, gosh, I think now going on six years or so. Um, Maureen is stepping down, uh, for no other reason than she just wants to do some different things and she still volunteers with the Cornwall Youth Soccer, Cornwall United Soccer. She may wanna get in, involved in some stuff in the town. She has definitely put in her service here. Um, so I've made some reach-outs, which I've informed the board of, um, of some people that may or may not be interested and we're looking at some options right now. Um, for an internal promotion potentially from the board itself to replace the chair, but then we have a, a spot to fill as well. So if any trustee has an additional name that they would like me to consider, cause remember this is done by board majority vote, it's an appointment. Um, please, please send it to me or just, just reach out to me. Um, we're not doing anything in the next couple of weeks. Um, Maureen has committed to staying on, um, until we have a replacement in place. So we're not, we're not, we're not, we don't have a shorthanded board. Okay, that's that. Thanks for, thanks for reminding me of that, Bill. I'll make another reminder, March sixteenth, which is Saturday, ten o'clock at Town Hall. If you're interested to hear the congressman speak about the lead pipe, the lead sheetings and, um, make mention of the, uh, the monies. All right, with that, that are there. I'll go around the board. Lloyd Beth.
Yeah, I'm good.
Nothing? Phil?
Uh, Donahue Committee meets on March twenty-sixth.
Your meeting got moved, yeah, cause there was a, there was a, there was a little bit of a quagmire here of meetings. Okay, thank you guys for being flexible on that. Thank you. Jim? Nothing? I got nothing? Any of the, uh, superintendents? Any alibis? Nothing?
After the meeting, Jim.
Who do you need to see? Okay, um, all right, so I'll make a motion to close the special meeting slash work session. Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, you'll give Doris those. Okay, those meeting minutes. All right, thank you, everybody. Dave, you'll kill that? Yeah, please.